All right, we're all set to open the public hearing. This is a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission, referencing the conservation property on Marsh Road. And I'll open it up to the Conservation Committee to give us a quick lowdown informational on it.
I'm Dave Mangus, Chairman of Conservation. Nate Fogg is one of our members. Peter Casperk is one of our members. He's all over it out here somewhere in the hallway. We started on this project a year and a half ago. Fishing Game signed on very early. We applied for and received a grant from LCHIP, another grant from PREP, which is out of Portsmouth and deals with the watershed down at Great Bay. We have grants to the total of 141,000. I negotiated a price with the owner, who was very interested in having it preserved as conservation land. The price for the five parcels was $150,000. To date, we've spent about $20,000 of conservation money for assessments, surveys, things like that to get ready for the deal. We have a signed purchase and sale agreement by the Selectmen a year ago next month. I think we voted on that. So it is a beautiful piece of parcel. It's 121 acres. It has a mile of frontage on the Branch River, which supplies many communities down south with drinking water, combines with the Salmon Falls River, goes into Milton Three Ponds, and eventually down to the ocean. We've taken some people out on the property. I described it as park-like. It was very beautifully timber-harvested in 2010. There's a lot of timber left, a lot of good habitat for wildlife. Every time we go out there, we see partridge and deer and signs of wildlife. The river is trout. There's 3,000 feet of frontage on the marsh, Union Meadows. Union Meadows is a good quiet fishing place. We also have other conservation land on the south side of Union Meadows. I guess the frosting, or the kicker, as some people would say, the kicker is that for the anticipated $30,000 out of conservation funds that this will cost, the town will own the property, the town will be able to harvest the timber. Fifty percent of the sales price, $75,000, is allocated to go to the Florabelle Weber Educational Trust, which has a sole purpose of providing scholarships to Wakefield students to go to college. We've calculated, just kind of offhand, that this amount of money would basically represent something like maybe 60 years of timber growth and harvest, which is the only way it has been funded recently. So it's going to give a great boost to that trust fund. And many people in the community, I think children of people in this room, have received those grants for college.
How many parcels is the total?
Five.
121 acres?
121.5, according to the survey. The tax card showed it is slightly different. And of course, that went back to historic times. One of the deeds actually, if you go back far enough, refers to acreage that is now underwater, out in the marsh. So sometimes we've had this tripping point where you look at a deed and it looks like it's the whole parcel. But in fact, that water is submerged and I guess is owned by the state.
Ken, my question would be, before we get started, is Dave said that we have a purchase and agreement that's already signed. Are we by law bonded by that purchase and agreement?
As good as the piece of paper it's written on.
So then, if that's the case, then why are we here?
This is the first of the public hearing moving forward to purchase the property. There'll be two public hearings with a final vote in the December meeting.
But that's what I'm saying, is if there's a purchase and agreement and there's no avenue out of the purchase and agreement, then why are we bothering to hold these people in here that may not or may want this to go through?
Well, it's their opportunity to speak. You've got to have something to start with, with the purchase and sales agreement to move forward that we were actually willing to sell it for that number, and we were actually able to allocate and come up with the additional funding through Fishing Game, LCHIP, all the other sources available for it. So chicken and the egg.
If I could answer that, I had to negotiate and get an agreed price from the seller to come to the Selectmen, because we couldn't offer it unless we knew that it, we had an agreement at a price that we could manage. We couldn't come in and talk about it, you know, realistically, if it was going to be raising tax funds for $200,000, $250,000. So we had to have an agreement we could define in dollars. Also, the buyer, the seller has held that property off the market for almost a year and a half now, so we've been given time to line up these grants and things like that.
I know, but my question hasn't been answered. My question is, are we bonded by the purchase and agreement to fulfill the agreement completely?
I'll give you a non-lawyer's answer, I'm familiar with it. If you do not go through with the contract, the same as any other contract, like buying a car or something like that, once you've made a commitment, there could be penalties involved. The whole deal would fall through, but this buyer has held the property off the market for a year and a half. She would have a legal cause to come back and she could say, "Well, I could have sold it for more back then," or, you know, citing some economic downfall. She could say, you know, "We've denied her some money that she could have had from some other source."
Many advertised meetings were held prior to the purchase and sales agreement being sold at other agreements. Public had plenty of opportunity to come forward and express their dismay with what was going on. And if it was a valid argument, the Board of Selectmen could have and would have taken it into consideration. But I think if you look at this, from my perspective at least, half of that money is going to an educational trust, which benefits the children of this community, and it already does benefit the children of this community. That whole entire land parcel is a water source for this community and other communities. The fact that you would be creating that open space, which is what the Conservation Commission started off, when I joined, 13 or 14 years ago, whatever it's been, we started about taking, trying to look at parcels down in that area to get contiguous parcels. Because you could create a wildlife corridor, but if you don't tell the wildlife they're supposed to follow that corridor, it doesn't make a damn bit of difference. So the idea wasn't to have a wildlife corridor, like we're going to play this game that the wildlife are actually going to agree with us. It was to try and find an area of Wakefield where there were large contiguous parcels that maybe someday, over the course of time, we could interwool them together and have a nice area. And that meadows is no better place. You've got wildlife, you've got recreation, you've got water, and you've got education for our children.
I'm not doubting-
It's a no-brainer.
I'm not doubting you, but my question was, is why wasn't-
We have to have legal standing to go with the survey and all this other stuff.
I know, but why wasn't the legal counsel given and out for the people that may not want-
That's behind the scenes now. Those are months and months old. We've moved past that.
Those are meetings that they could have showed up to, and that would have been discussed at that time. And there was some discussion going on at that time. I think there was a concern about the Agenda 21 issue. I'll bring that forward, because I know it's waiting in the wings. It's a U.N. agreement that, you know, Ed's more familiar with. He's running the camera back there. I'm not as familiar, I'll be the first to admit. But I'm not going to spend my whole life hiding behind curtains worrying that somebody's peeking in and going to steal it. React. We are living for today. We're trying to get a piece of land that'll last for future generations and benefit this community, and I think that's an ideal piece. So that's why we're, I know what you're thinking.
They just wanted me to shut up. Go ahead. Any more discussion?
I'm just, I'm not disagreeing that it's a nice piece. All I'm saying is that there are people that don't agree, and my point is it's for the few and not for the many. And I've made that clear. I'm not saying that it's a bad idea to preserve land for the reasons that you're saying. All I'm saying is that we have no, we don't have no, let's just say hypothetically, that the Fishing Game Department comes in tomorrow after we've purchased this and decides that there's an African marsh growing out there that just decides that nobody can use it. Now, that happens, because I've seen it happen on Sandy Pond.
It could happen in your backyard.
I agree.
You know, if a bald eagle puts a nest in your backyard, good luck.
So my point is, it's already preserved, correct?
No.
It isn't?
No.
It's private property. Private property, be anything.
But it's still national, it's still under protective resource?
No, it could easily have been sold off and developed.
Into what?
Several lots, probably. Host lots.
There is some edge down by the river that is in the flood zone, but it's really not a lot of it. Probably one of the lots upstream may be non-buildable, but it's all good contiguous land to tie into the other stuff, is my opinion.
And we're very fortunate that Florabelle Weber and Grace Falco and Virginia Harding have had the mindset that they're more concerned about the environment than the money. And, I mean, that's a blessing. And we're able to benefit from that through this purchase, so, you know.
Any more questions before we open it to the public? All right, we'll open it for public comments. Please state your name when I call on you, and if you haven't signed in, please sign in to the signing sheet going around. Pam, you were anxious.
Well, first, I'd like to speak as a chairman of, PM judge, Chairman of the Wakefield Heritage Commission. We were asked by the Conservation Commission if we would discuss and determine whether we could support this project. And we recently held a meeting. It was unanimously decided that the Wakefield Heritage Commission was totally in support of the purchase, the acquisition of this property as it's proposed. A couple things. There is a historic mill site on the property. It was part of the 18 sites that were done in the archaeological survey, that we received $20,500 from the Department of the Interior 10 years ago. So one of the sites is there. It also has a historic impact on the river, then into the meadow, and on downstream to many of the historic things that have occurred, and even are occurring now in rehabilitation and restoration in Union. So for that reason, I think that is why the, in a full vote, it was unanimously supported, and the Selectmen each have a copy of our letter to that effect. Also, since that, now I'd like to speak personally. Since that meeting, several of us who were on the commission, who were somewhat familiar with the property, most of us, but not in total, actually took a tour and went down and walked on the property. I don't know how many people who are here actually have done that, either who are in support or who are not in support. But what I have, it is an absolutely beautiful piece of property. As you know, I've been in business and real estate brokerage in this town for nearly 39 years, and I have never seen a parcel as attractive as this. It is beautiful. I do not believe that it can be used only by a few. There is a mile of river frontage. The children, we could have fishing derbies, the children can use the river. It is, as it's been mentioned, a park-like situation, as we've seen, as we walked down through there and rode down through. People of any age can use the property. They can bike, they can hike. A young child could go, it would be easy to navigate the land. Even an elderly person, even much, much older than I am, could actually get around down there. It's just a fantastic piece of property, and I think it's a benefit to many, many townspeople, and only a few. I understand no motorized vehicles could be there, because it's to be a wildlife refuge, and it's the noise. It's not anything but that that seems to be an issue. So I believe that it truly is for the benefit of the community. Say nothing about all the positives with money for education, but I'm sure if those of you have not seen it, you could have an opportunity to look, to go down there today in orange, but it's, it was, it's an absolutely remarkable piece of property, and it would be wonderful to conserve it for the whole community.
Is it gated?
Right now.
So it keeps out who?
Motorized vehicles, is my understanding. The gate was opened, and we actually, Dave Mangus took five or six of us down there from the Heritage Commission the other day, because we wanted to know exactly what we were supporting.
So how would you get a, how would you get a boat to it?
We'll have to look at other areas in terms of launching a boat. You can carry a kayak or canoe down from Marsh Road, but driving in the prop, driving too far in the property might encourage dumping. The general plan with conservation land would be to make a small parking lot visible from the road and put telephone poles or something so that people could walk in. But you want to keep, you know, cars and trucks visible. We did have an incident on our other property where someone drove in, they were out of sight, nobody could see what they were doing. They unloaded some vinyl siding scraps, and one of our conservation members found it, picked it up, took it to proper disposal. So the idea of driving in for recreation, you're only allowed to take like a bicycle or walking, canoe, kayak. You could take a snowmobile in in winter, but you can limit the access so people don't go in. You know, we don't want contractors' pickup trucks going in there.
Next question, Mr. Fulton.
I have a few things, three things that I have, that I have to ask. The boat launch, okay? There's nobody that has access to that metal, other than the guy that lives on the other side of the railroad track, and he's got a nice boat out there.
The boat launch at the private owner, the private property?
Yeah. He's got, he's got access to the water, but nobody else can put a boat out there.
Yeah.
So there's no, there's no dock. Now, say for instance, an elderly gentleman would like to go fishing, but he's got a canoe. How is he going to get the canoe into the water? All right, so that aspect of the thing I disagree with, and I think that we should, if we're going to do something, we should put at least docks in there, or a couple of docks, so somebody can, can launch a boat and go up there fishing and have the same privilege that guy has across the railroad track, okay? Number two, it says in the paper, Mr. Mangus put in the paper that, there's a couple of organizations, young organizations, that could use the property to go camping on on a limited basis, okay? Now, I'm not against that, but I think where, where it says, you know, an organization, what organization were you talking about, Dave? The Boy Scouts?
Well, we, they don't generally allow camping, because-
Why not?
Well, it's normal for Fishing Game Conservation Land not to allow camping, because boys and humans and all that infringes on the wildlife. We did negotiate with Fishing Game to allow limited, meaning about three weekends a year, youth groups, which could be Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, whatever. So they, with a little persuasion, agreed that there would be the limited weekend camping for youth groups. Generally, they wouldn't allow any camping at all, because it would tend to drive wildlife out of the area.
But you said, you said a while back that the town owns the property. Now, who owns the property? Does Fishing Game own it, or do we own it? If we own it, they ought to be able to make decisions as to whether we want to camp down there all summer long, or whether we want to camp a week, or five weeks. You see, what, what-
Your answer, Dave?
...to me is that we, I don't mind buying the place. That's not what I'm against. I think it's probably a better investment for the town. But when you say Fishing Game is going to control it, I don't think this is what we should do. If we're going to have something, we should control it so all people, everybody, whether they're 50 years old or 10 years old, or can go down and use it.
Arthur, I'd like to address you on this one, Mr. Fulton, I'd like to address you on this one. First of all, we're only putting up $30,000.
You say-
No, wait, no, wait. I'm saying, oh, well, wait a minute. Just let me finish. Fishing Game is putting up 100 and-
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five thousand. So theoretically, if you look at the numbers, they do own it, because they are buying it. They are buying the easement. We own the property, they are buying the easement. I think Keith might be able to explain it better.
Where are they getting 185,000?
Huh?
Where are they getting 185,000?
Eighty-five thousand.
All right, eighty-five.
Eighty-five thousand. That's from, I, I'll let Keith handle that. He knows the schematics of it.
I'm Keith Fletcher, I'm the Director of Land Conservation for Moose Mountain Regional Greenways. We've been involved with this project since the beginning and have been working with David on this. So I can give you a little bit of history, if that's helpful. The project started off, when we first looked at this, we considered, first of all, we went to, I got on the property and I walked down that property, and you get off this big escher, it's almost, you think it's a man-made berm, but it's not, it's a natural feature. And you're astonished, the view. You look down and the water's rushing by you, rushing by you from the Branch River. And it goes on like that for thousands of feet. It is a stunning property. I've walked a lot of property around here. The first impression of this one beats everything else I've gone on. So it wasn't just impressive to me, because as soon as we approached Fishing Game, talked to them about potentially getting some funding, they said yes. Now, the reason they said yes is because it ranks so very highly for habitat. And originally, we were considering, well, perhaps Fishing Game wants to buy it, but the town wanted to own it. And we, the people, folks wanted the town to, Dave and others, wanted scout groups to be able to go there, they wanted to have that use and some control over this property. So the town ownership was the idea. And Fishing Game said, fine, but this money we're getting is conservation money, so we have to ensure that the land is permanently protected. And the way that they do that is through a conservation easement. And it's the conservation easement that spells out the restrictions. I read the easement, refreshed myself with it just before the meeting, and it's, it's a pretty typical Fishing Game easement. They did make some accommodations. They don't typically allow camping, but because that was something the town specifically wanted, they, they did allow that. Some easements don't allow forestry, this one does, so the town will have a source of revenue through this. And so Fishing Game said, yes, you can have this conservation easement. So that's where, that's, that's where the, their rights come from, is from this legal document, it's called an easement deed, that spells out that the land will be permanently protected. It also limits what the state can do. I mean, it doesn't give the state carte blanche to come in and say, this is our land, by any means. Easements don't work like that. There's a section that says what, what they, what you're not allowed to do, but there's also a section saying, yeah, but you can do these things. And if you read it, you'll see those sections. In terms of the financing, this project is really a quarter-million-dollar project, and it's being accomplished with about $30,000 of town money. And all the other money comes from the landowner, who really wants to see this land conserved, being willing to sell at a lower price than she could probably get if she pushed it out on the open market. And it comes, 85,000 is coming from the Fishing Game Department, 50,000 is coming from LCHIP, so there's $135,000 of money that's coming from the state. And then the $4,000 from the feds via PREP. So all these other grant funds have been raised for this project.
And Keith, how much Fishing Game gets that 50, that 85,000, that's through license keys or?
That's through, what's the name of that fund?
It's a tax on ammunition.
It's a tax on ammunition. And that, background, 2008 elections, there was a lot of ammunition bought, and-
So it's not, it's not tax money, so to speak, is what I'm, where I was going with that.
And the town funds have already been raised, so that's the source.
What you're saying is not tax money. The grant money is our money. I don't care how you look at it, whatever grants you get. We pay, we pay federal taxes, we pay state taxes, we pay. So it's still coming out of our bloody pocket. The only thing that I have is, my, my only regret is to open, open the land up so that, you know, if it's a walkway, so a senior citizen could down with a cane or crutches or whatever and walk through there, see the birds and the pears and all of this. Put in a few docks for people to put in their canoe or go fishing out there, okay? The other thing is, camping for the younger generation. The use of the school over here, you know, need someplace to go in the summer, go camp out for a week or whatever, put up, put up a few buildings off the river there somewhere, and so that they can go and go to a summer camp and stuff. I can see that, and I can see the people here, you know, they want that land. Yes, they do. They don't think, they think that this is, you know, all of old cherries. Well, they're the bow of cherries, because the Fishing Game Club, no matter, Fishing Game Department, is going to control the land. There's no question about that. They're going to take what you can do, what you can't do, what you're already doing. You can go down there and camp out with an organization, limited. Well, if it's going to be hours, let's make it hours. If it's going to go to be hours, then let's get out of it.
Have you been down to the property, Arthur?
Huh?
Have you been down to the property?
I hunted that property when I was young.
It's probably 20 years since I've been out there, and I remember the roads and paths.
We already got land down there, haven't we? Don't we have some land down there?
For the south down, yeah.
On the other side, right? 128 acres.
Same size, just further south.
What have we done with that?
Conservation.
Conservation. Now, you come off in '16 to go onto that, right?
You can come off a Harmony Drive, into Harmony Extension.
How come we haven't put both docks down there, so that somebody has access?
Well, if you, if you look back at the minutes when we did that, take a look back at the minutes, because one of the things, when we, when we talked about going that meadows project, because I can tell you, I was on that. It was specific that we did not want motor boats going down there. We were going to devise a path that was going to be six feet wide, it was already a logging road going down towards the water. And we talked to the easement holder about creating a, I think, a two or a five-acre swath down to the water. It's going to be like 200 feet wide, an area that we could have for parking or trails, going down to the waterfront. No motorized boats. It was going to be a path where you could take one of these little dollies and walk your canoe down, or walk a rowboat down. We've got at least seven lakes in this town. Most of them have motorized boats. Wouldn't it be a novelty to just have one that the wildlife could have without a motor running across it? That's my thought. I mean, you've got that area down there, it's mostly, it's not that deep, Arthur. I mean, I know Mr. Rata has a pontoon boat down there, God bless him, he bought the right piece of property for himself to enjoy solitude.
And he wants, that's his private-
That's his private, exactly. But why should we open up to motorized boats? We're trying to create an area for wildlife. You can fish that brook, you can walk down to that brook.
I'd like to see you walk down and fish that brook from, from the backside of that meadow.
I have.
You have.
When I, when I set up the timber harvest, I was doing some fishing.
Yeah.
But I'm not saying, I'm, you know, I'm simply saying, it was set up, Arthur, that first part of the other side was set up to not have motorized boats, but to create a boat, a path for people to launch rowboats.
Rowboats is, I don't care as long as you have a dock to put a canoe in or a rowboat, I don't care if you have a paddle boat in there and you sit on it and ride it. But I'm saying, open it up to all the people. I mean, you're opening up to a few people, and the, and the community is, is more than a few. Like Dave said in his piece in the paper, you know, we can go down there, a few people will fish, and a few people will hunt. Well, not everybody is hunters or fishermen. All right? And, and, and listen, it's, it should be open up to all the people. And it should be open, if we're going to put money into it, and I don't care whether you get grants or whether you get, whatever you get, it's still coming out of our pockets. So, no.
The conservation easement keeps it open to the public forever. So we're making a step to keep it open by taking this conservation easement. It could be posted tomorrow as private property. It could be bought by someone who wants a private honey preserve and posted. So, but the whole point of the conservation easement is that it's open to the public. If somebody is physically unable to walk in a mile and a half to the marsh, it's, it's, we can't do everything for everybody with that. If someone really wants to go camping, and they'd like to have water, sewer, electric, level spot, I have some brochures in my car. And I provide a safe level camping experience for people up to 92, our oldest camper's been 92 years old, just like we have a ball field, and that's good for kids. I don't play softball, but other people do. So different properties have different uses in town. Yes, this property, I think it's pretty good walking, as Pam has said, but it wouldn't be everything for everybody. I don't think it's really possible. This is ideally suited for conservation and those outdoor activities. They use the word low impact. They, for, in order to be a wildlife area, they want low impact, so you could ride one of those trail bikes, you could walk, you can take your canoe down the river. But to make it everything for everybody- But, to make it everything for everybody would kind of not suit its purpose.
Everybody's going to be paying, I know it can't be all thanks to all people, Dave. That I understand, but I think you should think about the large majority of the people. And to turn this thing, to turn this thing over to Fish and Game and have them control it, I'm against it. I think we should...
Jerry?
Yeah, this was one of Dave's, that the town's got all this property?
The town owns the property, the town can harvest the timber, the town can put it in a snowmobile trail. The easement to Fish and Game just sort of is a guarantee that it'll be open to the public, and the uses that would be detrimental to the environment or the wildlife would be prohibited.
Right, but in the paperwork, it says a contingency, it says that the conveyance is contingent upon, one of the things is that United States of America agreeing to hold the conservation easements, which will encumber all the property being conveyed. So, it sounds like the United States of America's going to own that piece of property down there. But, the other thing I was wondering about was the, on the re-precitulation, was on the survey of the property, you only had four parcels listed totaling a hundred and seventeen The one that I had has a four and a half acre parcel, a seven acre parcel, a forty-three acre parcel, and a sixty-three acre parcel.
A totaling what?
A hundred and seventeen point five-five acres.
Those figures sound like they came off the tax maps, and there's a lot of information on the survey, and a lot of it is taken from the tax cards. When we actually went out there and did a survey, they found a little more acres than was on the tax card.
This is Marsha B.C., Certified General Appraiser.
She, yeah, she was looking at tax cards, she did, the survey wasn't done at that point, and she wrote that.
This isn't what you paid forty-seven hundred dollars for, is it?
Uh, yes, it is.
So, this is the appraisers you paid forty-seven hundred dollars for, and she didn't have the right information?
She had the best information available at the time, which was the tax cards. But, she did that early in the spring, the survey wasn't done until late in the summer. The historic figures on land often vary from the accurate, you know, to the millimeter surveys that you do today. There was also, historic survey actually included property before the meadows was flooded by the dam, so there's a discrepancy of about twenty acres. And, I don't have any accurate historical information, but I imagine that they used that area for marsh hay. It was probably pretty valuable and counted in the acreage back before it was flooded. But, of course, now it's underwater, and I assume that belongs to the state now. So, there's a lot of discrepancies when you look at older deeds. The survey we have now is accurate as they could do it by today's standards.
Is that some of those eleven thousand five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Another question. Go back.
My name's Dave Tickle. I understand that this money's coming from the conservation fund.
Correct.
So, it's not going to cost the taxpayers anything?
That money comes from current used properties, people that have their properties in current use, and when you take it out of current use, it's a penalty. That money's generated from that area there, so it does not come from taxed-generated revenue.
I understand that this is a conservation easement, meaning we're going to conserve the property, so we're also watching out for wildlife, so we can't turn it into a circus down there. And that doesn't mean everybody can go there when they want to go there and do what they want to do, it's got to be restricted. The other comment I have is, how many pieces of conservation land does this town have, where they're getting contributions to a scholarship fund? You people that turn and listen to Rocket Science, well, it's pretty simple. It's not costing us anything, we're preserving a quality piece of property, and we're getting money to educate our children. What else do you want?
Have you walked the property? Have you walked the property?
No, sir, I haven't. I've been on Union Meadows for years, Dr., but I've never been on that particular piece.
Yeah, there's a lot back in there. Tommy, get your hand up.
I just wondered in your relevance to walking the property, sorry, I've got there a little late, what do you...
Uh, just to know the land itself, as you know, you can easily buy a conservation easement for a piece of property that, you know, maybe it's two hundred acres, but you'd be lucky to build a house on it because it's led, it's this and that, and that's maybe not the parcel you want to preserve. You've got something flat, halfway decent soils, rolling hills, that's something more, I would think that you'd want to be preserving for the potential of development.
So, my point was, I have walked property quite a few times, and a lot of you guys know I am a builder and developer, and I think, you know, two things, is it's not a great, you know, site to be built on, you know, as far as any kind of development. And the people that own it now want to preserve it, that's what they want. They want us to go into conservation so it can never be built on. And that's what this allows us to do, and I think us as a Conservation Commission, we worked very hard to get this and get it to cost the town the least amount of money. And it's just, the people want us to conserve it, it makes sense, and even I think from a development standpoint, it makes sense, it's a great piece of property to conserve.
Any more questions? Mr. Brown?
Um, I've walked the property, and it's a nice piece of property, and I'm all for conserving this piece of property, but it would be the same thing as if the federal government came to you and said, "We're going to give you eighty-five thousand dollars, but in turn, we're going to take control of your home and the land beneath your home." How many people would give up control of their home to the federal government for eighty-five thousand dollars? What I say is, let's conserve the land for the people of the town, and let, it's only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Let's buy it for the town of Wakefield, and let's not buy it, and then turn around and give control of it to the federal government. Because I haven't seen the federal government do too much good lately, and so...
The first part of your question you can answer, it sounds like a reverse mortgage, and people are doing that all over the place. They're letting, they're selling their rights with a reverse mortgage all over the place. The second part is, it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand that we're getting from L-Chip and Fish and Game. And I would agree, if it wasn't that much money, the town should just buy it and not have Fish and Game telling us what to do and how to do, but it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars we're getting. We're conserving this parcel for twenty, thirty thousand dollars tops.
Right, but the total, the purchase price is a hundred and fifty.
Correct.
So, why don't we just put up a hundred and fifty ourselves and put it into conservation land for the town? And keep Fish and Game and federal government out of it.
Yeah, as we're looking at the budget season this year, with the proposed budget we have, we're six point two percent higher than last year, and we haven't even gotten to the warrant articles, we're looking at ten percent higher than last year, not jumping in and throwing a hundred and thirty-five thousand extra dollars into this to offset that. You know, it's offsetting the tax basis.
The Conservation Commission is just a small board, but way back when this started, we sort of polled the Conservation Commission on whether we would be in favor of floating a warrant article for a large sum of money, like a couple hundred thousand dollars, to buy conservation land. And I don't think anyone on the board was in favor of that concept at this time. And we worked really hard to sort of leverage this so that we could use a portion of the existing funds we have, and this leaves some funds for another project. We're already looking at two small pieces of river frontage, and they may be very cheap or even free, but they have to be surveyed and deeds and things like that in order to acquire them. So, we'd like to have some money left to do future projects.
Mr. Keith?
I would just like to go on record that it's a terrific opportunity for the town of Wakefield. It is open to all people, it is not open for all activities, nor should it be. It's to conserve it for the wildlife, and that's a wonderful, beautiful, and rare opportunity. So, I would definitely urge the selectmen to vote in favor of this, and my question is, when do you vote, and will it be tonight?
No, we'll have one more public hearing in November twenty-eighth, and then we'll be voting in December.
Okay.
Jerry, your hand back up.
I just had one question, I'm not sure if I got the right easement. I'll add two, I guess. I was wondering, Dave, how often will the Boy Scouts be able to use that down there? I didn't see anything in the easement that spelled out camping or where the provision was, as this fellow mentioned, Boy Scouts.
Rich Cook from Fish and Game and I walked out there and identified three areas that he took GPS readings, and he wanted to have as three specific spots which could be used alternating. There would be no improvements, no changes, they could go in and camp, but when they leave, you're not supposed to tell that anyone was ever there. I think that the word came out, it might take me a little long to find it, but I think the word was "few." We were negotiating as three weekends a year, to keep it limited, and I think maybe it came out as a few times a year, not specifically three. But, if we wanted to do some of these other things, we should probably just find another piece of land, you know, we could do something in the future if we wanted to make public camping or something like that. But, we have to keep a very, they use the word "low impact" public use.
Don't we already, go ahead, I'm sorry, Dave. No, I understand that point, I'm just, you know, when you come in and you say that we're going to get this land so the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts and all the Girl Scouts can use it, and then, you know, this is a good thing, if they can only use it twice a year, that fossil will never light up. I'm just wondering, in this easement here I was reading, that says in Exhibit P, it says, everybody's probably read this, but it says that the department loses control of the easement, and the department, I guess, is the Fish and Wildlife Service or the Department of Interior, I guess. And the Department of Interior is also one of the people that's in the grand tours part in the beginning, that's one of their assignees, one of their groups. But, it says if they lose control of the easement, control must be fully restored to the department, or the property must be replaced within three years, with a light easement of equal value at current market prices and equal benefits. Further, if the easement is used for activities that interfere with the accomplishment of the approved purpose, the violating activity shall cease, any resulting adverse effect shall be remedied. And that's in the easement on that property. But, it goes on to say, if the department determines that the easement is no longer needed or useful for its original purpose, and the service concurs, the department may, without written consent of the service, either acquire a conservation easement or other interest in land of equal value that serves the same approved purpose as the original property, and manage the newly acquired conservation easement or other interest in land for the same purposes specified in the original grant agreement, or repay the service in cash the proportionate federal share of funds invested in the original purchase price, or to repay the service in cash the proportionate federal share of the current fair market value of the easement, or any portion thereof.
That was probably written by an attorney, they never run out of words.
Well, it sounds to me like if they don't like that easement situation there, they can go and look in town for another piece of property to replace it.
I think...
Mike, what's your thing? That's standard language in easements, and the reason it's there is because of the money, the federal government's trying to protect, it's putting public money into this through the state, and what they're trying to do is they're trying to make sure that public investment persists. Now, the reasons, an easement cannot be unilaterally extinguished like that. The reason that they talk about it being extinguished is the purposes of the original easement is no longer there. I have an example. My local land trust in Maine has an easement on a little triangle of land, and the sole purpose of that easement was to protect some granite foundations that were there. Well, it was near a road, and people came and took the foundations. So, why is the easement still there? I don't think this land is, it suffers such change that it wouldn't still have some value for wildlife, even if the wildlife that's there changes because of the geology and location. I think it'll always have some wildlife value, and it's not likely to ever just go away because the purposes are going to no longer be relevant.
Okay, so this agreement is in perpetuity, which is, it can be, it's like forever. So, what you're saying is, your description of this to me is what someone else will interpret this being in a hundred and fifty years from now. If someone comes in and says, "Well, this piece of property, this hundred and whatever acres we got here, this hundred and twenty-two acres we got here, doesn't exactly serve our purpose, so we're going to get rid of this piece, and we're going to pick up a piece over here that would serve our purpose better." So, you're saying that that language in here doesn't give them the right to say that?
No, it doesn't.
Is that your legal opinion, or just your personal opinion?
I've been doing easements for a long time. Easements have been around for fifty years and more, there's no example I know of that ever happening.
Well, this is longer than fifty years, this is your grandchildren and their children, but I just see something written down, and if someone writes something down that says, "If this easement doesn't work out, if this piece of property isn't what we want, then we're going to pick another piece of property that we feel will do what we want." I mean, I'm not quite sure if that...
That's not what that means. What it means is, if the purposes for the easement, if the reason the easement is there is to protect certain things, and those things are no longer there, then the easement could go away. But, I don't see that happening with this property. It's not like my example, which was a few granite boulders. This property's always going to be there, the whole point of this is that it be preserved in perpetuity for your children, your grandchildren, and your great-grandchildren to enjoy. And I don't see that ever going away, and public recreation will always be there.
Unless someone comes in and cuts more than seventy-five percent, you're allowed, you have to leave seventy-five percent of the trees there, Peter? Seventy-five percent of the...
I could turn it into a field.
Ten percent of the...
If I had a use for it, if I wanted to do a change of use, I could turn it into a field, as long as I'm going to plant a garden out of it.
If you change it that drastically, that would give them the ability to look for another piece of property.
I wouldn't be able to do that because of that's there.
The land would still be there, the public use would still be there.
The town would still...
You could manage it as a...
The town would...
The town does own it.
I honestly think that that might be to our benefit, because if you're all worried about being able to put docks down there, and the Fish and Game doesn't want you to do that, if we're able someday in the future to come up with another piece of land that was attracted to Fish and Game for wildlife benefits, we might be able to look at them and say, "Listen, we'd like to put docks down here, you can have this for your wildlife, we want this for public recreation."
Maybe I just don't trust the federal government and lawyers as much as you guys do, but I figure they put something in writing in a contract, I figure that it's in there for a reason.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, Jerry, his first question was about the use of it, and I don't want anyone to have the misimpression that use can only use it three times a year. Schoolchildren can go there every day. Old people, young people, schoolchildren go there every day. It's only the overnight camping that is limited.
Anybody wants to take a recreational walk? Anybody wants to just go and enjoy the scenery?
And I think one of the other things, if I can add to that, the idea behind this conservation easement was not to set up a Boy Scout reservation. That was a secondary thought of a purpose that would benefit the children of this community, and the people of this community. The primary thought behind this was to conserve this piece of land along this waterfall, you know, massive amounts of water, and preserve this area. You know, I've looked at it also, I'll take it one step further, which might be totally far-fetched, but you look at the Union Meadows, you go to a lot of bigger cities and bigger communities, they have water reservoirs. It'd be nice to think ahead in the future a little bit to say, "You know what, maybe someday that Union Meadows could be the reservoir that supplies the water for this community." I'm not, I'm just throwing that out there, saying, you know, someday. And if you're not having any motor boats out there and anything else, you're one step in the right direction for clean water.
That's awesome, but it should be in the easement that you're going to have the ability to go in there and do that.
State owns the water.
We had a question over here?
Well, it's not a question, I just want to help this gentleman understand that, and I know a little better. One thing is, if you can't really understand an easement without knowing the legal documents that, the legal laws that have created our ability to make conservation easements. So, the governing legislation, you're trying to understand this without understanding the governing legislation, that's difficult to do. But, let me augment Keith's example. The purpose of that clause is to say, if for some reason this land no longer becomes suitable to the purposes of the easement, there are very few things that could cause that to happen. I think that's part of what Keith's trying to say. One thing that, and there's almost nothing that can culminate an easement. One that can is eminent domain. That would be an example where you would destroy the use of that easement. Eminent domain, as you know, is rarely carried out, but that's one of the few things that can extinguish an easement. If it did happen, that means that the federal government would be able to preserve their investment by requiring that another piece of property of equal value and equal merit... investment by requiring that another piece of property of equal value and equal merit be substituted for it. And whether or not that eminent domain would be carried out would be dependent on the laws which govern eminent domain, which I don't know much about. It's a rare thing that can happen. This thing is written by lawyers. You know, that pretty much says it all. They're going to write something to satisfy every contingency that they can. They're getting paid by the word and by the amount of time to those words. But there's also a purpose there. That's the purpose. If you just look at that document and you don't look at the governing of the legislation that created it, you don't know the laws, you're going to have a lot of questions. So at any rate, that's the reason. It's not that somebody wants to come along and arbitrarily take this away and put an easement on another piece of property. That's not the purpose of that clause and it's not going to happen.
What was your name, sir?
Steve Panish.
Steve what?
Panish, P-A-N-I-S-H. I'm on the board of Musnot, which is not a great company to do an easement. And I have actually done three easements on my own property. And these easements are all voluntary. And this easement is happening because the landowners who currently own that, they want to protect it.
And they want to sell it too.
And they want to sell it too?
Okay.
Virginia Long. I'd like to reiterate the point that if the town doesn't go through on purchasing this land, the landowner wants to sell it. So we don't know who would buy it. And it could very well be somebody who puts no trespassing signs all around it. And townspeople would have no access anymore at all. And that seems to me a shame. The other point I'd like to make is that, as people have said, the town's only putting in $35,000, which is about like a 75% off sale. It's a really good deal. And you know, when you get a deal like that, you sometimes buy a product as-is because it doesn't have quite everything that's perfect, that has some limitations or some of the knobs don't work. So here, in this case, it's like the easement is the as-is. There are a few restrictions, but it's still a great deal.
It is, it is a great deal. And if I might just respond briefly to that, and I don't have any problem with conservation. I know everybody's conservation minded, but my basic problem is being an American and knowing how private property rights and private property is so important to this nation, I just don't like to sell out something like private property rights for $35,000, $40,000, $75,000.
$150,000.
You know, you can be happy, you can be happy that you're selling out and we're eroding our private property rights. I mean, we may come to a point sometime where our freedom of speech is up and we're happy to sell that for $50,000 or $60,000, but you know, private property is one of the things that made this country great. And if somebody buys a piece of property next to you and they do what they want with it, that shouldn't necessarily be a crime. That's just the way the free enterprise system works, is private property. I know Dave made a joke about his campground. You know, if 50 years ago, somebody had made, put your piece of property into a conservation easement, you wouldn't have what you have up there today. Maybe you'd be happy about that. You'd be glad that that property was conserved in perpetuity. You wouldn't have a couple hundred camping trailers and houses and be making money up there and that might make you happy. But you know, that's the way that the private enterprise system works. And we should work to keep it working and keep, to have it stay that way.
Any more questions?
I'd just like to add, one thing that makes us a great state, it's called the White Mountains National Forest. We've got a lot of state forests around here that people are allowed to walk on that probably wouldn't have been there. And I'm sure if you'd have been here in the early or late 1800s, early 1900s, when there wasn't a tree left standing on any of that property, you'd agree that it's for the benefit of the people right now that what's been done. It might not always look at in the beginning, but certainly in the end, you certainly do appreciate it.
Any more questions? Mr. Rich.
Bruce Rich, I'm a resident of Wakefield. I don't want to take too much time. We're getting away here, but I think I did it very well. This is a no-brainer, folks. The Conservation Commission has worked very hard to get this put together. They've sat on it for a long time. The landowner has come to the table. I would urge you to please go ahead and approve this. If Mr. Brown and his others are more comfortable with the town owning conservation land outright in the future, I have no problem with that. The way to do it, I believe, is through the warrant article process. If they want to meet with the budget committee and put a warrant article on there, not for this piece of property, but just for future land acquisition by the town of Wakefield for conservation purposes, that's fine. Go do it. It's a good idea. But don't tie this up. Do the right thing and support it. Thank you.
That's actually why we use the money from current use penalties, so it doesn't affect the tax rate or the tax dollars.
That's one way to do it, but you can do it by warrant, too.
Yep. Any more questions? Charlie, you had one?
We already own 128 acres out there?
I don't know exactly.
Is that what you said? Or somebody said?
There's 128 acres with the barbed rock slope. And most of it is protected, I think 12 acres of that is a kingdom lot. And then there's another 20 or 30 acres of protective area around that kingdom lot. And then the rest of it is conservation easement for the public to enjoy, to walk, to enjoy the trails. We also own another 30 acres or so that used to be the McLaughlin parcel, maybe 35 acres. As you first walk in off of how many extension, it's on your left and it goes all the way down to the river, comes up behind the Irving Station. And then beyond that, we have the Laurian parcel, which is around 21 acres. And as I said in the very beginning of this, what we're trying to do and what we've tried to do for the last 13 or 14 years is get a lot of contiguous parcels through that area to all tie in. I think there's a Carl Seaman Trust not too far away. The only thing between us and the Carl Seaman Trust, I believe, is about 100 and somewhat acres of Alice Ziegler property. And that's something that I've also been in contact with Mrs. Ziegler about. And Gloria Rhodes has a parcel. So these are all parcels out there that, we've been talking to these people for 10 years or better in trying to get this whole thing moving so that we've focused in that area. So it's part of a bigger plan.
Some of those properties are in Milton, Stratford County you were talking about?
The Seaman Trust is over the line.
So but just because it's a line on paper, it's all?
Wildland don't seem to recognize that. They just keep on walking.
Any more questions? Go ahead.
I'm Ed Camo. I live in Brookfield, but most of my land's in Wakefield. I'm noticing the problem here isn't that people, you know, people want to conserve the land and they think it's a very important thing to do. But how many here have true understanding about this easement? Do you really understand the easement all the way through? This is the issue, is that you don't. You also said that you don't really understand eminent domain. The solution to this whole problem is since we all agree it should be conserved, the solution is to find a better way of processing conservation land. Because if we keep doing this every time we process it, it's going to make this even more lengthy as time goes on. It would be easier if we all sat down and figured out how to sit the lawyers down and have them explain all this stuff. That way, if we have a full understanding of what this all means, then we can make a better judgment to it. Even some of the selectmen have not read it. They don't understand it. They admit they don't. But they're going to vote, which is already past that point. They're going to vote to accept it. So all I'm saying is next time, instead of just a warrant article, we need to all sit down and we need to understand all this language so we can make a better decision. So I would say work on the process because we've already passed it. Thank you.
Any more questions?
I would comment that the conservation easement has been given to the town attorney and he's reviewed it.
Mr. Brown?
We were originally supposed to close on this property in June. Then it gets postponed to August. We've already had two public hearings. So why are we having two more public hearings? Because we were supposed to close on this, what, three, four months ago? So why are we still in the process of going through this whole process again if it wasn't because I heard that Washington was requesting more time to look at the easement?
We thought, a year ago, we thought it might be done in six months. And six months ago, we thought it might be done in three months. And it was held up at the federal level. Rich Cook from Fish and Game had to pass this whole project through a federal bureau down in Massachusetts. And that took two months. So we've had some delays. It didn't run completely smooth. The buyer has given us an extension at this point until January to close. These hearings could have happened last summer, but it's a matter of chicken and egg. You've got to get all your ducks in a row before you can do this. We have to have these hearings before the selectmen could vote to accept these grants and things.
Any more questions? All right, we'll close tonight's public hearing. We will have another one on the 28th. 28th will be voted on December 12th. Thank you for coming.